Father, we thank you so much for all your blessings. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Please watch over all that we do, all of our paperwork. Please watch all of our visitors as they travel to and from this event. We thank you for the rain and we ask you for a little more rain, dear Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, one individual, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, the one state under God, one individual.
Yeah. You should get that.
Welcome, everyone. We're glad you're here. We're going to recognize visitors. Are there any visitors out there who would like to be recognized? We said the chance to talk, but if you'd like to be recognized, now is your chance. Nobody? No one wants? Very well. Commissioners, opening remarks. Commissioner Oliveris?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Good morning, everyone, and early Happy Easter. I think this will be a great weekend. The weather has been pretty, very, very cooperative, so Happy Easter to everyone. Y'all traveling, hopefully have some safe travels, so be careful on the road. Last week, it's been pretty active. I had an opportunity to meet with our new director at the BDA, Michael Blair. He gave me a site tour, and then also he did an excellent job, an overview of his goals and visions for the facilities, what he's planning on doing. Meeting went very, very well, very informative, very, very, very good dialogue. I also attended the Spring Fest, pretty good turnout, a lot of participants, some good bands, so it was a good item. As far as the, on the EOC, we have a few little punch lists items we're trying to get knocked out before we finalize the contract, so hopefully this week we'll get those items done. So an example of the punch list that we have left is roll-up doors, they need to be, need to do work there. We have some exterior locks, and there's a floor box that we need, floor box that needs to be corrected. So the good thing, even though, you know, one may question, gee, these little punch lists are continuing on, the positive thing about that is that we have our EOC management that's already on-site and able to work the facilities and identify some of these disconnects early before the contract is completely signed out and closed out. So that's, to me, that's a positive, because once everything gets closed out and finalized, it's hard to get contracted back in to fix these little items. So that's a good. Also, another proof on how well the EOC is working, we last week conducted training for the Incident Command 300, and then this week they're going to have another meeting for the Incident Command 400. So great facilities, working out well, all these little lectures are doing well, the parking lot facilities, gentlemen, is working very good, got the test, so that's going well. In Skidmore, they completed the communication towers. This is a huge safety event for the community, so it's going to enhance our communication over the radio immensely. So it was tested several times this past week, and everything seemed to be working well. So that is a really, really good thing that the court was able to provide, Skidmore, which is one of the, to get this tower in, so very, very good with that. Spray for mosquitoes, things are going well, just a lot of mosquitoes. Even though, it might not be no standing water, trust me, the mosquitoes are there. If your grass isn't cut in your yard, you might want to cut it down a little bit. Personally speaking, that happened to me. I had my grass was, I don't want it to get too tall, but just a little grass in the yard, the mosquitoes love to participate. And also, I guess, one message to the community is Road and Bridge is definitely spraying for mosquitoes. If you do not see the truck and you have any question whether your street was sprayed or not, please, please give our Road and Bridge a call, or call myself. But they are spraying. If you do not see the vehicle or the truck passing in front of your yard, doesn't mean it didn't spray, but we do have records, should we have to prove that to you, that it was sprayed, it was sprayed. The other thing, I think, you can help yourself and also the county, if you have any standing water on your, on the place where you live, towed tires or anything that might be holding water that help breed mosquitoes, if you could get rid of that water, that's going to help a lot too. So all these little small things will add up, things that you can do that should help the county do that. Even though we're spraying, but it's very difficult to get all the wooded areas throughout the, throughout the county, so for our operation, it would be greatly appreciated. I wanted to remind everyone in Papalote, we're going to have the annual cook-off. Spots are still available, and they're also still accepting donations, so if you can help them out, we appreciate that. With that, absolutely.
All right. Been a busy two weeks. Had a meeting last week with Michael Blair and the judge. That was a pick-off meeting where he got to meet the judge, and we had a lot of good ideas get thrown across there, and then he's got something he's going to bring forward to the court. I had a call with Kenneth Vandoza, Road and Bridge, on the signs. I think they've slacked up on me this week a little bit, unless somebody else, they were stolen, but we're still working on that part. Hopefully, if anybody sees anything, any activity, please let us know or call it into the sheriff's office.
They slacked up on the stealing.
They slacked up on the stealing. I mean, I've been missing signs left and right. A big thank you to Kenneth, though, for getting out there and, is he the only one that's spraying for mosquitoes?
He does a ton of work on that.
I know. A lot of people don't see him. I get calls all the time about the mosquitoes. I know down south, they're far worse than they are up north, or on the west, or east side, but he's out there working, so a big shout-out and a thank you to him for doing that. Thank you, guys. AEP finally got their last bit of paperwork for the security lights going up on 351. They should be finalizing that this week and putting it up, so we'll get that one going. We're working on the bids for the flooring for the DA's office and the district clerk, and those bids aren't finally in yet, but we're going to search around and see if we can find a couple more prices before we make a final, a final judge on that. I had a meeting with the SIGLE school, and we approved one of the, one of our employees to get additional 30 days. And then we had, our big meeting here was for the courthouse restoration, and we had the walkthrough and the meeting last week. Everything looks good, paperwork's coming forward, so we should be getting a contract that's going to come to the court here in the next couple of weeks. So we got that going there. Attended the skeet shoot for the BISD, that was very well attended, and lots of, lots of participants. I know they raised a lot of good money for the school. I got a BDA meeting tonight, and we have a lot on the agenda for this evening. And least but not last, I want to congratulate our auditor, Cantu, being on the board of directors for TAC, for the risk management pool, and also the podcast she put out. She did a great job.
Congratulations.
We need you around the corner.
For that, I'll pass her.
When did I get put on that? Oh, heavens. I too also met with Michael Blair this past week at the BDA, and went over a lot of good ideas. I'm sure the same with you guys. We'll be waiting to hear from him on that. Also, I want to congratulate the AC Jones welding team. Those guys, back-to-back, one state, and now they're going to go on to nationals to represent Texas and Atlanta, Georgia, June the 23rd through the 27th. So congratulations to those guys. I hope they do well and come back successful. Also, this past weekend, the VFW had one of their annual fundraisers. They usually have a big fundraiser, one, sometimes twice a year, and I spearheaded with them to take over the food portion, and I want to thank everyone that donated briskets and committed to potato salad and rice to make that a successfully event. So nothing came out of their pocket to put this on, so that was really good. Looking at some lighting issues around the area where we currently have fixtures, but the bulb is bad, the dawn-to-dust sensor's bad, so going to look at some different places to see if we can get those lights back on. And the signs, I guess they've cut down on the, on the county, county side, but Texas, I talked to Mitch Arredondo, and they had here recently 17 signs alone stolen on 1349. Seventeen of them. And anyway, I talked to him last night about it, and just want to make everyone aware that, you know, people are out there, people are watching, you know. This day and age, you got cell phones, you got cameras, you got video, so you never know who's watching. When they turn you in, it's not going to be good, so.
They moved from the east side to the west side.
Moving around. So, anyway. And then also, as I mentioned, Road and Bridge, thank you for the mosquito spraying. I know the same thing. I've had people call. I haven't seen them in the area. Guys, either Kenneth or his helper, Manuel Hernandez, are out spraying till 10:30, 11:00 at night. So just because you didn't see them go by doesn't mean that they didn't. You may have been asleep. So if you, if you aren't sure, just like Commissioner Oliveri said, you can call the office, 361-621-1555, and you can request to come by your area, or see if they've come by the area. So I just don't want people to say, well, they haven't come by when they really may have. So if you're not sure, call and find out. Call the office, call myself, call one of the commissioners, we'll be more than happy to help you out. With that, I'll pass back to Commissioner DeWitt.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple things I want to add to the mosquitoes. We need to remember, they spray these mosquitoes at night. Now, the first thing you want to know, well, why can't they come up during the day? It's because of the bees. At night, the bees go inside the hive, so then they can go spray, and it doesn't hurt the bees. If they're sprayed during the daytime, they're going to kill the bees. We don't want to kill our bees. We need the bees. And one area that we all forget, I guarantee you, we forget about dumping the water out of, is the gutters around your house. If you've got gutters around your house, or there's going to be one or two places in those gutters, it's going to be a little bit low, it's going to catch water, and I guarantee you, if you go up there and look, there's mosquito larvae in that water. So if you've got that mosquito dust, or whatever you want to call it, the dunks or whatever, be sure you throw something that gets in your gutter. I saw that in my house. I couldn't understand. I treated all the standing water, whatever tires it were. Tires are real bad, too. Thank you for mentioning, they're real bad. And I couldn't understand. I'd sit outside, and mosquitoes would swarm, and they were in the darn gutters. So check those gutters. A couple of updates. Update on the bus stop in Mineral. I tried to keep you all up to date on where we were. As we all know, it was torn down. It was damaged, it was demolished, so it would be safe. It hasn't been replaced. There is a discrepancy between what the contractor thinks it should cost to replace it and what the insurance company costs, so they're trying to work that out. If they can't get it worked out, I'll be bringing the entire thing to the court, and we'll make a decision on what we're going to do. But that's for another, another day. The BDA, I also met with Mr. Blair out there, and I want to compliment the BDA board of directors for their choice. I think he's fantastic. He's a ball of fire. He's got some great ideas, just like Commissioner Oliveris and the other commissioners. We went around and looked at everything. He's really got some good ideas, so I think you guys did a great job, and I compliment you for that. I really did. Thank you. The training that's been going on at the Emergency Management Center, I stepped in for just a few seconds the other day to look and see what was going on. There were trucks everywhere, so I said, I need to go see. We did good building that building like we built it. It is set up for training. There were probably 30 people in there training. There's plenty of room for everybody. The instructor was doing well. So sometimes government does things right. I think we did it right, putting that building out there where we did. If you stop and think where it was before, it was in the top of the building next door, where the district attorney is. The whole office area they were able to use is probably, if you stretch this out, as big as this room. Okay, if you put 30, 40, 50 people in here with all their laptops and their equipment, then you have the district attorney's people trying to work and everything else going on. I can imagine what it was entailing up there. But out there, there's plenty of room, there's two or three different places they do training, so commissioners, I think we did good spending the money out there. I really did. We did good. Let me see here. Something else, on Road and Bridge, on the mosquito spraying, remember, they're out there at night, so give them a little slack, they're doing good. And Road and Bridge is getting a lot of calls about the hackberry trees that keep falling, and they're dead, and they're falling on the roads. They're moving them as quick as they can. People are very understanding. I know that there's been one or two that I hooked a chain onto, and I picked up and dragged it up in a ditch and got it out of the way. So public will just be understanding with us, they're getting to them as quick as they can. We know they're going to fall. More of them are coming down. It's beginning to happen on the state highways now, too, I know, especially the foreign market roads, so they'll get to them as quickly as they can. So with that, I will move to the next agenda item, but thank you, commissioners, very, very fun to go through, good job. Public comment. Now is the time, if someone out there in the public has something they'd like to speak to the public about or the court about, now is your time. If you would, please come to the lectern, and we'll listen to whatever you might have to say. Go on once. It's your chance again. No one. Okay, thank you. Item number seven, the following items are administrative nature. Commissioners, court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve.
Second. We have motion to second. Any further comments or?
Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
For agenda item number 18, the sheriff has a budget amendment which is included in all of this, so if we can abstain from that one until that's heard.
Okay, so the motion will be for everything but item?
Well, one of the budget amendments, it's included.
I'll amend my motion to exclude that one.
And then it'll be, you know, discussed on number 18.
All those, same side. Fashion management, thank you. Item number eight, approved proclamation designated April 2025 as National Safe Digging Month in B County. We have a delegation here from the 811 folks, but before we do that, let's either approve or disapprove of the proclamation. Do we have a?
Motion to approve.
We have two motions to approve, and? One second, so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Mr. Cave, sir, I think you're in charge of this delegation. Would you like to introduce everybody and tell us what you'd like to do?
Well, let me give a little introduction first, and we have people from the LEPC officers, we have the sheriff's office, we have B County maintenance with us, we have LEP supporters as well as LEPC officers that's here today that we want to support and thank the commissioners. But first of all, I'd like to say, David Cave, on behalf of the B County Local Emergency Planning Committee that works under the direction of TCEQ to meet TIDAM and EPA requirements for safety, just wanted to recognize Joel Sines, who is the colony far chief and the LEPC Damage Committee Chair, sitting right back here, and for his efforts working with all the pipeline companies to conduct drills and training to keep B County a much safer place to live and work. And he also, his co-chair, which wasn't able to make it, is Brad Reed, and he's with Conoco Phillips Pipeline Company. We're here today because the U.S. Department of Transportation Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration recognizes April as a National Safe Digging Month in an effort to remind everyone to call 811 a few days before any home or commercial digging project. Whether you're landscaping your yard, building a deck, or installing a mailbox at your home, it's absolutely essential to call 811 ahead of time. And just remember, to take one step like this could save your life and help to keep your neighbors, your community, and keeping our environmental safe. Environmental, environment, safe. So today, we'd like to thank the judge and the commissioners for agreeing to declare the proclamation that B County recognizes the month of April as National Safe Digging Month as a means to raise the safety awareness of all citizens and construction personnel. And before we take a picture in a moment, we do with the commissioners, we would like to have David Ferguson, a representative of 811 Texas 811, in attendance today, say a few words to the commissioners and the citizens of B County, if that's okay.
Absolute, please.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I wanted, Mr. Cave, Mr. Ridge, the commissioners for allowing me this opportunity to be here today. And David Ferguson, I'm a Regional Damage Prevention Manager with Texas 811. We are the notification center for Texas. Every state has that notification center, and we always want to, especially during April National Safe Digging Month, we always want to encourage everyone, like what you were saying, to call 811 or notify us and connect before they start digging. We recognize, unfortunately, that we are issuing over 4 million tickets a year to these, these locators, these utility operators, and asking them to go out and mark those underground utilities. We're averaging around 19,000 to 21,000 tickets a day in Texas. So those numbers are increasing, which is good, the message is getting out, but we still have a lot of people who, unfortunately, don't notify us, or call us, or notify us before they dig, and unfortunately end up striking an underground utility. So it's very important that we always spread that message. I travel around Texas, educating our citizens, our municipalities, counties. I am the subject matter expert, so I'm at the Capitol every so often, testifying as a resource for our representatives at the Capitol, helping them better understand what 811 is and protecting underground facilities. Again, we always want to make sure that even homeowners and landowners know that calling or notifying is important, because we do see where there are underground utilities on our properties, on our land, and we want to make sure they're marked. Those that are owned, operated, maintained, and repaired, those lines are the ones that have to be marked prior to any digging. We also want to make sure homeowners understand that if they hire a contractor to come on their property to do any kind of plumbing, electrical, landscaping, fence building, that those contractors have to have a one-call ticket prior to doing their work. So they need to make sure that their contractors have their, we'll say, permit, a locating ticket prior to them starting to work on their property. If a homeowner is actually doing the work, then the homeowner would call in the ticket. But we want to, always want to make sure that everyone understands the importance of calling in, and I am actually happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to the one-call system, the process, anything like that in Texas, as a subject matter expert.
David, a few words, and I've used the system several times. Tell everybody exactly how easy it is. You just call 811, and tell them what happens next.
Yes, and it's a free service. So you call 811, or you go onto our website or our portal, you request a locate ticket. We take that information, create a locate ticket, and that is sent out to the utility operators, your gas operators, your electric, your fiber. Now, what is unique in Texas currently is Class A underground facility operators, which are the ones I just mentioned, are required to be a part of the one-call system and be notified, so they can send out either their in-house locators or their contracted locators. You may see this company called USIC, and their trucks that go around, they mark a lot of underground utilities. But anyway, either they're in-house or they're contracted locators go out and mark those utilities, and they are required to do that within a 48-hour wait time. And that's the time we're waiting before we can allow anyone to dig, and then that, and that does not include weekends or holidays, that 48 hours. But it's a very easy service, it's a free service. They go out, they mark their lines prior to digging, and once that 48 hours is up, then you can potentially start to dig safely around your underground utilities. Now, what is unique to Texas currently is Class B facility operators, our water and our sewer are not required to be a part of the one-call system. So some underground water systems, you may have to reach out to them directly and ask them if they have a locating service that will mark their water and sewer. It's a voluntary membership right now, but there is a bill in the, in the House right now that has been introduced to require all Class B to be a part of the one-call system. We're still waiting on that. That's still in session right now. But we're hoping that passes, and we hope all underground utilities, including waters, who will be a part of the one-call system. So all you have to do is just make one call, or one notice, and we will then notify those utility operators who are in vicinity of where you're going to work, and they will go out and they will mark those lines or clear the area prior to you digging, so you know the approximate location of that underground utility, and hopefully there will be no damages, no one hurt, and the environment will be safe.
And what you'll find after they leave is either a set of flags in the ground, or maybe paint in the grass, or paint on the road.
That's right.
And you see it around your neighborhood, that's what's going on. Somebody's fixing to do something. Even our Road and Bridge folks, when they put in a sign, they call 811.
That's right.
Because there's something there they don't know about, and they don't want that sign going through it.
No, and I brought in a few cards over there, little wallet cards that show you what the different colors mean, like yellow for gas, red for electric, orange for fiber, internet cable, blue for water, green for sewer. So you kind of will know what those marks and those flags on the ground that we see mean, what are those. And then you'll see those marks and flags, then usually you'll see some sort of abbreviation or indication of who placed those marks, who do those marks belong to. So when you're looking at your locate ticket and you see the people that we notified on your behalf of the body ticket, you can make sure everyone has located or marked or cleared it prior to digging, because again, we don't want anyone to strike something. I remember prior to Texas 811, joining Texas 811 eight years ago, I ran the Railroad Commission of Texas 811 denturing program for them before retiring, and I remember there were situations where we would have a case that someone was doing some sort of excavation, or drilling, or boring, and they bored into a very small line, and as you may know, gas can migrate easily, and it migrated, unfortunately, in one situation, they hit this lady's sewer line and her gas line at the same time on Friday. They migrate, hit that line, she wasn't home, and on Monday, she came in and turned her stove on, and that might, that gas had migrated through her sewer system into her house, and she didn't know it, and she turned on her stove and blew up her house, and she was in it. She was burned 80%. And we had another case where there was a line that was hit, a very small four-inch line, and that gas migrated down the street into a gentleman's house, and he came home, and all he did was turn on the light switch, and that was an ignition source, and that blew up his house, and unfortunately, that gentleman did not live. And he lived next door to a playground, and his house ended up in the playground, and thank God there were no children that day. So we just know the importance of the safety, of making sure all utilities are marked prior to digging, even if it's fiber or electrical or whatever it is.
You know, one place that we as elected officials forget is when you're putting up T-posts and signs, now, most of the lines are supposed to be very deeper than that, but sometimes the old ones are not, and you could run a T-post into a telephone line, fiber optic line, or whatever. So we never think about that.
Right. We had a situation where someone was just putting up a tent, and they drove the stick right into a poly line, because yes, they're installed, gas lines are required by law to be installed at a certain depth, but over time, because of erosion or grating, they can be very shallow. And then, you know, I don't know about you, but I know my internet service line is right below the grass, so I could hit it easily. So yes, it doesn't take, it doesn't have to be very deep, and a lot of times, it really may be in a location you weren't aware. So those temporary marks really help indicate the approximate location to indicate where we can stay away from or dig safely around.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Does anyone else in your delegation want to address the court? This is your chance. Dave, do you want to have them stand up and tell us who they are and what they're doing, or what their function is?
Well, they're just different members. I did want to say, in closing, I forgot to remind everybody, Robert Bridges is here, and he is on the governor's board for one call as well, and our 811 local representative that retired, Robert was able to find David to come down here and speak with us. But we will get them all up in a moment for a picture, okay? I did want to take one second on the LEPC side, just to remind everybody, what we do is we work with different groups, and the pipeline group is very important. So the work that Joel and Brad does with that group, they come and educate us. One of the things that I've learned from them is, being a country boy, when you're outside and you see that pipeline marker, and it goes for about a mile, they said, if you go out there, you're going to excavate, put in a septic tank or something, you're going to do something on your own, that is just a guideline, and there has been pipelines hit that were 50 yards wider than where the markers are, because over time, things migrate. So again, just because you think that marker's there, that may be, may not be where the pipeline itself is. So, but we appreciate it. But if we have time, because we don't have time, the commissioners' court, we have a proclamation. Is it okay if we line up behind?
Absolutely. Wherever you want to do this.
Let's do it behind, if we can move the chairs, we can. We have a big group.
We're tying in the?
Ryan can be right over here by the curb.
Good river.
Is it okay if we line up behind?
Absolutely, wherever you want to do this.
Let's do it behind, if we can move the chairs, we can, we have a big group.
We're tying in the.
Ryan can be right over here by the curb.
Good room.
We'll keep him lined up for him, so if we can get everybody up there, Joel.
Good job.
Okay. Here, come challenge your. Tell us a bunch of.
I was about to.
Don't.
Get yourself situated. He can get you up. I forgot about this. Sure, give me.
Watch it, you're gonna get behind. We've moved that way, I guess, a little bit.
I'm gonna stay with you, yeah, I'm gonna stay with you. Come stay with me.
Ryan, here, I sit on your, I sit on your.
Sure.
Joel, you're right there. Y'all come over.
Right here, guy, right here.
Ryan, why you throwing a kink at everything, Ryan? Come on.
It's going, dude, I was coming to.
Look at how.
Wait one second.
Almost forgot, ran over my foot.
And taking lots of pictures, somebody always links it up. We need to close the gap. Sheriff, can you get a little bit further this way?
All right, I'll go get the picture.
Close the gap. There we go.
I'm sure.
There we go.
Commissioner, Oliver, shall we move in a little more?
That's a wide group.
Wide angle, panoramic.
What are you saying?
Good job. It was a big group.
Two.
I could get my one.
Yeah, the nine one, the 811 delegation is more than welcome to stay, but you're welcome to leave, too. We have a lot of exciting things left on the agenda, but y'all are welcome to go. I know you have things to do.
Yes.
Okay, number nine. Approved, subproved, Subrecip. Subrecip, thank you. Agreement between the Texas General Land Office and B County for the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program, contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash one three eight dash E nine nine six. Jennifer and Commissioner Farias, I think this is y'all's item.
Yes, it is. This is something we've been working on, or we submitted twenty-three months ago. This was two years ago we submitted.
Wait, this, this one's the.
Yeah, this isn't Midmont.
It's not Midmont?
I thought it was Midmont.
This was four million, two hundred and one thousand.
No, this is, this.
It's Midmont?
Oh, it isn't.
This is new water wells and stuff.
Yes, sir, yes. We submitted this twenty-three, uh, twenty-three months ago. We finally got the letter back, we had answered all the questions. Jennifer, thank you. Uh, and now, it's now in the court's hands to approve this, and once this is approved, this will be sent back to GLO, and then they'll will, they'll send us, uh, instructions, or they'll request a onsite meeting to get this thing kicked off. And they're going to give us instructions for it. We have a two-year window in which to complete all these projects. So, going forward, uh, the total on this is four million, seven hundred and one thousand, six hundred dollars, and it includes projects, uh, as far as, okay, starting with Pettis, they got a new water well, and then they get some, uh, some work done in, let's see what. Oh, the, uh, water well, and then they get some at their lift station. And then Tynan also gets a new well, and then they get fire hydrants and a bunch of other items over there. They had a lot of smaller items in, in, uh, in Tynan. And then also, Commissioner Olivares has, uh, Silver Creek, a new bridge, and six thirty-one. So, those are the improvements that this grant includes. I'm asking for approval for the court, so we can take the next step going forward.
Do you have a motion, sir?
That is my motion for the court to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passage unanimous. Commissioner Jennifer, thank y'all for good work. This stuff drags on. When I looked at, there were what, seventy-five pages or something?
No, more than that. It was like.
It doesn't make, it's kind of like regulation and bureaucracy, it doesn't make any sense. It just keeps going on and on and on and on. But, we want the money, so we, we're going to play the game.
Right, we have two, two, uh, folks assigned to us from Grant Works that are going to be leading us in this charge, uh, and I know they're going to be coming forward. As soon as Grant Works comes in, uh, as soon as GLO comes in and says, "We request onsite meeting," they're going to give us instructions, and we're supposed to follow the instructions. Jennifer, that's when you come in and play here.
That's where Hanson Engineering is going to take in their, like they, because they've already submitted these plans, and what they intend to do, and what the project's going to entail. So, it's just a matter of getting that free money to start.
And there was no match on this, was there?
No.
No, this, this, this is the money that.
This is free money.
Yes, that's the one that, uh, y'all got at the COB.
Right.
You know, so, this is, this is free money, trying to get Pettis up and running, skip the rest of the, uh, the bridges, so, hey, it's a good item.
It's a good, it's a good deal. Thank y'all for your due diligence, thank you very much.
I think it'll be interesting to see what the new costs are going to come out to be in.
Yes, from what they were.
From what they were two years ago, because we're.
A million dollars for the well back then, they're saying a million and a half or so now, we'll do what we can.
Well, they, they bid it, so they gotta hold to those, the estimator that put those prices together was, we're going to hold them to their contract.
Good deal. So, we have a motion, second, it's been approved, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item number ten. Approved interlocal agreement between Pettis Municipal Utility District and B County for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBJ Colonial Fund Construction, CFC, project number twenty-five dash zero one zero four. This is, uh, Auditor's Office, Ms. Jennifer.
Yes, so this one is the, uh, Colonial Fund that we're working together with, uh, New Witches River Authority to get this done. We've just had our first round of kind of initiating what these projects are going to be, but we are anticipating to have a portion allocated towards Pettis and a portion allocated towards Tynan. So, that's what these agreements are going for.
Awesome. Make the motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passage unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Number eleven. Approved interlocal agreement between Tynan Water Supply Corporation of B County for the CBGV CFC, project number twenty-five dash one zero four. Ms. Jennifer, this is yours also, ma'am.
Yes, this is the Tynan side of these agreements as well.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second.
Motion and a second.
Any further compensation or comments? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passage unanimous. Thank you very much.
These are, I tell you what, the, the, these three projects we just discussed, Tynan and Pettis and then Silver Creek, desperate need of these items, and this, these are good projects, they really are. Approved reappointment board members to the Coastal Bend Council of Government's Board of Directors. Right now, the voting members are, uh, Judge Morrell and Commissioner DeWitt. Judge Morrell is the chairman of the board. Uh, the alternate members currently are Commissioner Lenny and Commissioner Farias. Uh, I think, and I know that Judge Morrell and Commissioner DeWitt have agreed to serve again. Do we have a motion?
Move, move to approve.
Move to approve it as it exists now?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second, to leave it as it is? Are there any further comments? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Number thirteen. Approved expo request for autotoll fee waiver from Moreno Junior High School for the eighth grade dance being held on Saturday, April nineteenth, two thousand and five. Uh, Wally from Expo is not here. Do we have, uh, a motion?
So, move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passage unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Number fourteen. Approved twenty-two-five procurement proposal contract between B County and Public Power Pool for the electric power supply procurement process. Gentlemen, that, I'm your representative on the P-three committee. Uh, the county has been with P-three since, I think, the nineties, late nineties, early two thousand.
Since two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one. And the savings are several hundred thousand dollars because of these contracts, and I would recommend to the court that we approve, uh, going out and, and recontracting with them, and approve this agreement with the, uh, uh, only twenty-two-five procurement proposal.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments, Madam Monitor?
I did want to say that, um, all of the accounts were verified, and they all checked out as far as what were, that they are all active on our side.
Fantastic, so it is correct.
Yes, sir.
And do you agree, Madam Monitor, that it's a good thing that we read this?
Yes, yes, they take care of the procurement process, and it, and it just works, because they, they're able to broaden, uh, their perspective of the procurement process, which I'm.
And I know there is a, uh, paperwork that needs to be filled out, signed by the county judge, this will authorize the county judge to sign it, and then, uh, your office or Sharon or Kenny will get that paperwork back to the P-three.
Yes, yes, sir.
So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. This is, this is very important, it saves the county a bunch of money.
Number fifteen. Approved the State of Texas Housing Representatives Resolution celebrating B County at the State Capitol, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and five. Madam Monitor, this is your item. Your name is by it, anyway.
I didn't submit it. Um, I believe this was when, when, uh, B County went to.
Yes, ma'am, I think this is kind of housekeeping, we're approving the resolution, so.
Do you approve?
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Number sixteen. Approved memorandum of understanding between the Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office for the use of the two thousand and nineteen Ford F-150 B. Do we have a motion, or Sheriff, do you, is there anything you'd like to say? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, second. Motion and a second. Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Number seventeen.
Approved rent application between the Ed Rochelle Foundation of B County for the Sheriff's Office. I think this is, uh, something that they went out and found money for, for body cams and some other instruments, some other goodies that they need, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. This is, this is very important, it saves the county a bunch of money.
Number fifteen. Approved the State of Texas Housing Representatives Resolution celebrating B County at the State Capitol, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and five. Madam Monitor, this is your item. Your name is by it, anyway.
I didn't submit it. Um, I believe this was when, when, uh, B County went to.
Yes, ma'am, I think this is kind of housekeeping, we're approving the resolution, so.
Do you approve?
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Number sixteen. Approved memorandum of understanding between the Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office for the use of the two thousand and nineteen Ford F-150 B. Do we have a motion, or Sheriff, do you, is there anything you'd like to say? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, second. Motion and a second. Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Number seventeen. Approved rent application between the Ed Rochelle Foundation of B County for the Sheriff's Office. I think this is, uh, something that they went out and found money for, for body cams and some other instruments, some other goodies that they need, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye. Chief, does this count for last month's grant or this month's grant?
It's for forty-five thousand, so that's a lot of, that's a lot of count.
One of the times, I like. One of the times, I like. Thank you, chief, appreciate the work.
You've been in there, no match, so that's a good thing, y'all did good finding this.
Thank you very much.
Number eighteen. Approved Sheriff's Office Emergency Budget Amendment for the Safety and Security of the B County Law Enforcement Center due to unforeseen issues with the generator and subsequent generator derailment. Do we have a motion to approve? This is something that had to be done.
Approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Any updates on that?
They're working on it right now, today.
So, it's two weeks, or it's going to keep the.
Two and a half weeks, probably.
Just keep it for the month, then?
Yeah, we got an email this morning from Stacy that they were working on it today. They should be fixing it today, so we should be able to return the rental.
The rental was either by the week or by the month, so now, we're already past the point, so we might as well keep it for the month.
Well, you do what you got to do, I mean, you have to do it, you don't have a charge.
And we'll touch base with them, see what, see if we can work out anything.
Well, for the month, we, I think there was an extra week that was given for.
Right.
Not free, but it was thrown into, for the, instead of weekly use.
Sure. And at least you were able to find a company that just tell you, yeah, what brand, put it, said that, that's good.
It was pretty immediate.
Yeah.
Good job.
I want to thank also, uh, was it Mr. Silva that moved that for you?
Yes, they had to, the company came and put it in a location that.
It was the wrong place.
So, Silva came with his.
Yeah, Mr. Jeff Silva came in with his equipment and moved it in the right place for the Sheriff's Office.
Special shout out to Jeff Silva.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Silva, good job. He's a very community oriented, does a good job.
Number nineteen. Approved interlocal corporation agreement between Clayburg County Attorney's Office and B County Sheriff's Office for Law and Corporate Services.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, we have a second, and motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You want to.
Is there anything you would like to tell us about this?
Interlocal?
About this interlocal, about what y'all are cooperating on?
Russell Perk, Chief Deputy at the B County Sheriff's Office. Um, the commander at the, the Clayburg County Task Force, um, met with us a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about, uh, developing an MOU so we can work narcotics and, uh, interdiction and human smuggling cases, uh, in multiple jurisdictions with those folks. They'll come here, we'll go there, um, based on the MOU.
Great, basic cooperation.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Good job, good job. Cooperation's always fantastic.
Number twenty. Approved Sheriff's Office request for an additional jail sergeant position utilizing unused personnel funds. Madam Monitor, is that?
Since he's up there.
Since he's up there.
Since he's up there, I'll move.
Wow.
Before we get to the yes or no, Madam Monitor, are the funds available?
Well, funds are available, but I'd like them to please explain what this because this, of course, is in between budget time and it incurs on the next budget, so please.
And they may not be familiar with normally, we don't do things like this, so.
They are very familiar.
They are.
That's very familiar.
So please do your best to explain and convince us what we're doing.
I will do my best, sir. We've identified along with the captain, jail captain and sheriff, we've identified some gaps in supervision and training having to do with the nighttime shifts. So we've identified that and the addition of a supervisor at nighttime will help that and benefit that. We've also identified two unused positions that we haven't filled. One of those being a full-time correction officer, another being two part-time correction officers that we have in the current budget. What we'd like to do is forfeit those two positions for the upcoming budget and use those unused funds now to develop a sergeant's position in the jail to help with those deficiencies we've identified at nighttime.
And you already have the sergeant coming with the new position?
Oh, we have an idea, but we'll take applications and, you know, proper promotions, things like that.
And how many dollars are you talking about? I know it's spelled out. Is that what you're getting the rest of you? Madam Monitor?
Oh, it's going to be twenty-six thousand eight oh one, and that is with that is with the benefits for eleven pay periods, and this would start if this is approved for this next pay period, which is what this is.
Okay, one thing we have to remember too, if we approve this position, then that position is in the next year's budget, so.
At sixty-eight thousand.
It will eliminate the other two positions that we're using the funds for.
Right. But then this position would be for sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight thousand one eighty-one, and that's, of course, the benefits that we have.
Right, I understand. It's not straight salary, it's salary benefit.
Yes, sir.
The thing that I see is I appreciate y'all have identified a need. We have the ability to do this. I know y'all are coming in and you're seeing some things that maybe need to be done a certain way, and do we have a motion?
Some move?
We have a motion in the second or a comment? We have a motion, second. Please your comment.
So totally understand what you're trying to do and I appreciate that. And I guess, you know, looking back a couple of years ago, we had a similar situation. We tried to try to leverage, so this is a little bit kind of sort of, but I feel like we've set a precedence already in the past, and then now we're going to go back and change it, so maybe someone can help explain that a little bit better so I can get a better understanding. While we couldn't do it in the beginning, now it's okay now?
It's a justification that the sheriff's office and the deficiencies that they're identifying and for the court and the court is agreeing to go forward to incur on their next budget, but also what they're identifying is being able to free up some additional money going into budget. So we're going to work very closely to hold to hold them to some of those monies to come back in and as, you know, help balance.
Captain Bailey, this will help you in your to to move forward and get your your staff right?
Correct, sir. As Chief Perk said, we've identified or I've identified some deficiencies coming in. So in order to remain in compliance and maintain compliance with the next commission on jail standards, this position would absolutely help secure that compliance with jail standards. Once we get into non-compliance, it's.
It's ketchup.
Oh, yeah, right. So better be proactive than reactive, in my opinion. So having that at night would ensure that would help ensure compliance.
Thank you.
One thing we need to remember too, that our jail captain used to work right from long with commission of jail standards.
That is correct, sir.
So she knows maybe more about this and she's forgotten more about this than we'll ever know, so I think this is a good thing.
I like the proactive part instead of the reactive part as far as that goes, so it's very much.
So we have a motion in the second. Any further comments, Mr.?
Thank you for the explanation.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You understand us. Thank y'all for bringing this to our attention, and I'm glad we were able to help a little bit.
Thank you.
Number twenty-one. Approved request to extend the Skidmore Citizens' Collection Center's hours of operation to Monday, Wednesday and Friday, eight AM to twelve PM, close for lunch, twelve PM to one PM, and then from one PM to four thirty for a ninety day trial period. Before we do too much of this, this is the operation we've been under in mineral for a long time, correct?
Right.
Now, and I understand the reason we haven't done this in Skidmore is that time that they weren't at the center, they were out doing other things and then they came back, but we're wanting to get them both on the same schedule. Is that correct? Okay. Is there anything that y'all like to tell the court or just we'll vote on it if you don't want to get up and talk?
Right, is the staffing going to be the same or whatever? Nothing's going to change except the hours?
It will be the same.
It works in mineral.
It works.
Weather mineral.
And I think it'd be better for the citizens in Skidmore though.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion? Second?
Yes, he's second. You're second?
Yes.
Yeah.
You have a comment?
I do. I think this is going to be a great thing for the community, extending those hours are going to help hopefully some of the legal dumping, a lot of the trash that's on the side of the road and gets picked up. Hopefully it'll help.
You know.
It's a great thing.
Commissioner, what's interesting, I didn't realize they both weren't the same until this was brought to my attention. I thought they both were operating exactly the same way.
And I've looked at both schedules and, you know, I've had challenges and we're trying to get the website up to date, and I've been working with the road and bridge to get it up because there aren't the prices are different, there's other things, but yeah, I'm I'm.
I think this is a good thing.
Right, you're going to bring this back after ninety days to let us know if it's working or not working or what?
I I would recommend that after ninety days, if it's working, that Commissioner lets us know and we don't have to put it back on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
We'll wait if we do this, go through, we'll start.
Okay. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Start date.
Start date. When do you when do you want to do it? Immediately?
Wednesday?
Starting Wednesday this week.
That'll work. That's your motion?
Yep.
Okay.
All of my motion to.
Middle second.
So we've got a motion in the second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you for bringing this to the court. Like I say, I did not realize they weren't the same. It's worked out real good in mineral because people know they're there and that sort of thing. They don't drive up, nobody's there. Great, good job. Number twenty-two. Accept certificate of recognition from Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Cools Worker Compensation Program for B County Zero Lost Time in two thousand and twenty-four. Pass the Madam Monitor, is that yours?
Well, I submitted it, but I did ask Hymna to to explain just what that means for the workers.
Please. That's pretty awesome.
Yes, it is. It really is.
I'm going to still HR Director. Gentlemen, if you may, if I may, I'm just going to read the email that came with that certificate. It says, congratulations on behalf of the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool. We are pleased to inform you that your county has received a two thousand and twenty-four TAC RMP Zero Lost Time Safety Award. This award is created to recognize TAC RMP Workers' Compensation Program participants whose employees have experienced no lost workdays during the two thousand and twenty-four coverage year. We remain committed to supporting your continued safety efforts. Please let us know to reach out to the risk management team. Congratulations on this achievement. Basically, gentlemen, this is not something that is applied for. This is actually a recognition due to the fact that in a nutshell, we just had no missed days in two thousand and twenty-four due to workers' comp injuries. And a lot of that goes to the department heads and the elected officials who have employees working under them because they're the ones that when a worker gets injured and comes back with something from the doctor that maybe has restrictions, they're the ones that find avenues for them to be able to work under those restrictions, allowing for no lost time. And of course, you know, no lost time and different things like that, it actually helps towards expensive costs when it comes to employees that are injured.
Awesome.
Good job. Good question. Great job. I think this is great for the county. It's also, I think, will help us finance those votes too because having zero time accidents, I guess, the question, does the county have in place an effort to help mitigate some of these lost time accidents and with the classification around lost time accidents? So as an example, sometimes those individuals that may be deemed by the doctor that it could be a lost time, he might be able to do some light duty work to call him a case manager, basically is the right term for it. Do we have something like that in place?
Yeah, we have what's called a return to work program. And in there, it has the process for if an employee is injured, what they and how it would it would roll out. We put that in place, the court actually approved it several years ago, but that helps towards what we're actually talking about here, that that was put in place. Because that kind of sets the pattern where if an injured employee gets gets an employee gets injured, then it's not just a matter of they're going to be sent home. In law enforcement, it's one of those areas where this is really important because when it comes to workers' compensation, they get a hundred percent compensation for being out or injured while everybody else only gets seventy percent of their checks. So there's always this avenue for fraud in a situation like that. But since we have a return to work program set in place, this actually gets the employee out and back to work under the guidance of whatever the doctor says. If they're not able to do that, then that's when the employee will be able to go home and do collect workers' comp until the doctor changes those orders or they're released to full duty. But as of this point, that hasn't had to happen. All the departments that have had injured employees, they've worked their employees to some degree under the restrictions of the doctors.
That's that's huge.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I know that when there is an injury, there's a meeting, investigation, I know emergency management folks get involved, you get involved, there's detailed investigation done. So do we have a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve or accept, I guess?
Yes, it's just accepted.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Number twenty-three. Approved resolution authorizing B County's annual participation in Texas Smart Buy Membership Program of the Texas Controlled or Pelican Accounts Bargaining Purchasing Program. Madam Monitor, I think this is yours.
This is just to help us with procurement, so I appreciate your consideration.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Moves to approve.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Number twenty-four. Hurricane Harvey update. Do we have any hurricane Harvey updates, sir?
We had it. We got we got the contract and we're waiting for the judge to, I think, finalize it and send it off, and I think that's going to be done, and we're waiting for GLO to come back and say, hey, we want to have a meeting and let's get this thing on the road.
Awesome, Joe. Let me use latitude here. We have a district judge here. Madam Wiley, would you like to address the court on anything, ma'am?
I threw April for a little bit of a loop this morning. We Judge Hardwick and I are working very hard about getting our presentation to y'all, but I'll we I know he's discussed it with Judge Morale on more than one occasion, setting up a pre-trial service office to try and alleviate some of the backlog we have in the county, especially at the jail. And I had a meeting with last week with the sheriff and his chief deputy, and we had Chief Bear there, Judge Hardwick, myself, Judge Showwater. We're really working on the mental health aspect. That's that's sort of an area that we have not been very diligent about in county and not my county, so so you know, and I've already taken that over. Judge Till is the president or chairman of the Camino Real Local Mental Health Authority, and so he's sort of been pushing me to get Camino Real, I mean, postal planes up. So we're really working really hard trying to get that relationship. So those are two things that I personally am working on right now about this. We have Judge Hardwick, so thank goodness I had him to help me. But we're going to hopefully come back in a couple of weeks with that presentation. We have a pre-trial service office to go back to that particular point in San Pat, and it's been immense savings to the county. Wanted assist the JPs immensely on getting some of the people out of jail sooner, save fish on misdemeanor level, make sure that somebody is monitoring the time that someone is in jail. And this person and way we do it in San Pat is the county pays San Pat Community Supervision Office to run that department. And so we we were sort of stalled for a while until last week till Chief Deputy and Sheriff volunteered an office at the jail for that person. We don't have the room at the portable building, let it be right on the probation department now. So we're going to be moving forward. We'll bring that presentation to you hopefully within the next month. And I said it's been a huge windfall in San Pat, but the reason I brought the mental health, we don't have it monitor that in San Pat, but I think in B County, we're going to add that responsibility in that office. Because in San Pat, we have a lot more people in and out of jail than we do here in B. So I just I'm telling you, this is the way it's going. A lot of counties years ago jumped on the bandwagon. We were very slow to do it until we saw we just had to do it in San Pat. There's no option. No one was doing, no one had the ability to do what needed to be done. And this individual, Norm, it goes to jail every day, every inmate immediately, backs up the JP for any request the JP needs for mental health, physical health, you know, whether or not this person should be getting out on a monitored bond or not instead of waiting in our jail and spending up some valuable jail space. So that alone is huge, huge, non-monetary and not in your pockets, it's going to be a huge saving to the county. And so we're really excited about trying to get that going. The next issue is when we find the right person.
We don't have a person there.
We have no one doing that job. Right now, the JP's sort of do it piecemeal. The clerks are supposed to be monitoring a little bit a little bit tighter than they're able to with their their current staff because there's these there's these rules about how long to make a stage, you know? And we need to make sure that we're in compliance with that.
Is there training for them or is this just something new?
Well, it's there is a actually a pre-trial service organization in the state of Texas that meets and they and we we sent the employee in San Pat to Victoria, and she stayed there a week and followed that person, and they're they had the very they were one of the first ones in South Texas to have set that off, is it? And so she found out a lot of different things. There's so many avenues we can find over that position. I hate to say, I keep coming up with more ideas, that's what that person needs to do. It's mainly for criminal criminal cases and mental health, well, basically a disasisted jail. And and they're, like I said, the way we do it in San Pat, we run through probation because they can put these people on the jail for year analysis. We have that ability at the probation department. They also they have ability to collect time and monitoring, all these things that our JPs don't have in their hands, the pre-trial service that we run and the community supervision will have opportunity to do. It's just, I said, it's been very, very successful.
This would be like extra duties is assigned to an individual who's already existing?
No, it'd be a new person.
New person. Okay, and here's one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's totally.
Now, are we talking about budgeting for a person?
It's it's budgeting for a department. It's what and that's what that's what judges.
Yeah, and we're working on that.
When she comes in, that she's going to.
And since we're fixing to start working on budgets, your time is your time is perfect.
Well, we're a little bit behind what we wanted to be, but again, until I okay, we're trying to get the sheriff and his staff a couple of days of not not many hundred, twenty. To be on point before we brought him over and said, hey, we want it and and I can tell you, the quick meeting we talked about, they both, his whole staff, especially his jail captain, we need that.
Yes, to get them to get him out of there.
And so we just don't need we don't need housing people that need to be not jail. Yes, sir.
Good question. I said, is it possible, and I like to set up a meeting with the app to kind of outside the court just to get a better understanding of this role. I think it's great.
Yeah, we were, we got it.
By chance? By chance? Do you have any roles or descriptions identified yet? Still we're going to.
We're all ahead of you. We got we did we did we have we we have, we're going to talk to you from San Pat. And I just emailed to April this morning. We were just one again, we've been sort of waiting, so it needs to be revised, so Commissioner, I'd like to revise it before, and I can send you all ahead of time before the before we present, that way if you have any questions, we can set up meetings. But like I said, I'm I'm super excited about that because.
Who will this position report to?
Community supervision. And it'd be a if we contract, the probation, yes, sir. And so y'all will be given the money, so technically you're going to be in charge. There's a yearly report, the pre-trial by law, it's statutory, it's in the codes. And they would report to the commissioners each year, and I can show you what it does, they'll tell you how many how many people they've seen, how many people they monitor, and then again, whatever added duties. So technically, it's really your, the you five are in charge, it's just instead of having to put it under. Okay, yeah, instead of having HR have another and have figuring out who's going to be in charge because it's so closely related to we have got we have got we have figured out we there's real real law. As a district judge or any any magistrate can order a defendant to be pre-trial supervised by probation, but there's a little little unknown rule. If you have more than, I think that I'm going to say thirty percent of your community supervision supervisees are on pre-trial, the state cuts funding with them. So we they were doing that in law court and the JP, everybody that got out on a less than fifteen hundred dollar bond had to go see probation. We're like, well, you can't do that to us because we're going to lose money, you're hurting yourself. So that's what it's one of those things, the state can say, well, let me come up with this pre-trial office, here's the big gamut, here's the laws, here are how the rules are, and it's basically open for anything we need them to do pre-trial before they get to see the actual trial judge. And so again, I I can't tell you how successfully I feel like it is in San. You know, and they again, the clerks are jumping up and down because it's just helping them without having to add someone there, and it's totally court controlled the way we set it up in San in San Pat. Y'all may do it want to do it differently. Y'all may want to set it up under HR, but then it'd be under one one elected official, that makes it difficult for you for you all and the district judges. You really aren't asking to have another employee, and it doesn't quote look appropriate to be under a judge's office because we got about Judge Hardwick's office, County Court of Law. But it's just not it's just not appropriate because we're dealing with appointments and all those things.
And so you're looking basically, it'll be under the probation department?
It'd be a separate line item, the commissioner's court would pay to probation to run that office.
And then that office, though, would be in the sheriff's office?
We just we identified a office space if they need it, so people will give them that.
You would rather have it under the probation department in your office?
Probably so.
Yeah, I I really don't think the sheriff wants to run that either. It gets a little bit of conflict in terms of courts. The sheriff is a defensive attorney, so if we had a public defender's office that was totally controlled by the county, they sometimes will take some of those duties. You know, Tala has lately taken, we used to have some eye control at the jail every day. Yes. After that, we do not anymore, that's taken out of contract. So there's a lot of things that were removed from that contract that this office would be totally your control.
Because we did that, we did have that component, a part of Tala, it was that mental health component, and it never quite.
It never worked.
It never worked.
It never jailed.
And so they met with the Oversight Board Committee for it was a couple of years, I guess, and then they just did away with it.
Okay. We look forward to your presentation.
That's okay. So I got all the details, Sharon helped me today, and so I'll get with Judge Hardwick. We got to revamp that. The the presentation was from two thousand and twenty-one. That's how long we had it in San Pat, just for y'all to know. We started in two thousand and twenty-two, and we just we now have, I think it's two and a half employees. We have the director, then the assistant, and then we have, I think, a lady that spends her time halfway between probation and community supervision and pre-trial. But again, you know, I'm looking at it, I think I think one person can do it in this county just because of the size.
So the one in San Pat falls under the court or falls under their probation?
Probation department.
Under the probation, okay.
Because they have the probation.
Because we have a space there. We just don't have the space here. So I mean, they would still be technically run by the probation. What happens is there is an office here at the at the portable building the probation offices in, but it is used by a counselor two days a week, and we do not, we're not going to. So the question is, where'd they go the other two days? And that's why we're thinking of having them go to the jail, have their, you know, semi-set up computer at the jail, and then when they need to, they'll meet individuals.
Well, it's it's handy right there at the jail too to meet these people.
It is. It's no use to it. Don't you promise we don't have the UAs and all that, so we'd have to haul them back over to probation, so but I think I think that can be worked out.
Good. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
So we'll keep you updated, but just be looking for that hopefully within the next three commissioners, maybe Judge Hardwick's calendars can meet can meet up with y'all.
Yep, because budget is May.
Well, we send out worksheets in May, and so June is when it really starts.
So she'll start putting it in, like I said, I'll get what they go further.
Good deal.
Thank y'all, I know it's sort of blowing my.
Salary committee. We start the salary committee already next month. So that's something we're going to have to.
We'll start looking at.
Looking at.
What about y'all? You got any questions for me, your thoughts, comments?
No. Under the probation, so we have an adult and juvenile.
It's only adults, only for adults. Yes, sir, only for adults.
It's probably okay.
Yes, no, thank you. That's a good one. Now, that probation, our juvenile probation here handles all those matters right now within that department just because of the way the law is set up, those cases initially at the jail at the at the law enforcement, they immediately go to the juvenile probation. Every every case goes immediately there along with the prosecutors, just a little different setup.
I wonder if we classify them as an exempt employee if we did that one under that probation.
Because it sounds like it'd be a director position, and I heard you say director, is that?
Well, that's a solid column. Because pre-trial, you know, I don't know that I don't think you need to worry about the classification the probation department would do. You're just going to fund the you're going to fund the position, is how they did it, so.
Because they would have to have certain education parameters, wouldn't they, to be able to do this?
Maybe, maybe not. I don't I'm going to tell you, I don't know that they do, and I may be wrong. They don't have to be a probation.
There's nothing statutorily required that they have to have this degree or whatever?
I'm just trying to think of the ones that I know who do it in the other counties. Of course, Callie and I, she's she's got. Of course, Callie and Ira, she's, she's got, she is a certified community supervision officer and that has, you have to have a bachelor's degree to do that, I think, unless they've changed that, they're looking at changing.
Because if they check all the boxes, then we would be.
But you know, but you don't, no, you don't, no, no, you're not at all, you're contracting with the probation department.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, so they, that, they, she's, she's still. Yeah, they're still a probation officer, I mean, they're still being paid by probation, in, in the, other probation department.
So, maybe we just.
We have a separate law.
Probation, well, no, because all we have is a building, we don't have any expenses for the probation, only building. Just their building. I mean, well, just for their department.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
So, I guess maybe we can expand on that one, maybe on that department, we can expand it.
Under that lineup, that's what, I think that's how they do it. I think it's under that, it's pre-trial service.
That, that's making sense to me.
And I've got things like accountant and that one. I slide and go, I mean, I love accounting, but.
That's the way you have.
As long as it wouldn't jeopardize our funding and that's, that's what.
It does not.
Well, I mean, it's going to.
I know for a while there, the state did have some grants out there, but I, that's been years, we didn't ever take advantage of it.
Chief?
So, we're, we're excited about trying to get that going, we're working, like I said, with the mental health department. Those are two things that, those are sort of what I'm working on right now and we'll see, see what happens.
Thank you, Judge.
The jury this week, so I'll be rolling around, driving everybody cra, I'll be driving everybody crazy to come get all my to-do lists worked on, there's two days.
Well, you come and visit.
All right, thanks y'all, y'all let us know if we can help y'all, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for taking the time to come in and give us that.
I was hoping y'all be done, somebody's still here, mine was faster than mine.
We have no executive session, I know of gentlemen, the next item is item twenty-five, adjourned. How much do, Madam Marshall, adjourned?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any objection to adjournment? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen, thank y'all for being here, thank you very much.